Good evening and welcome to the Coon Rapids City Council meeting for Tuesday, February 18th, 2025. If you could please rise and join us for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let's call the roll.
Councilmember Grisgoviac.
Here.
Councilmember Butler.
Here.
Councilmember Novak. Councilmember Geisler.
Here.
Councilmember Armstrong.
Here.
Councilmember Carlson.
Here.
Mayor Cook.
Here.
One absent, Novak.
Thank you. All right. Why don't we approve this evening's agenda?
Motion to approve the agenda, Mr. Mayor?
Second. Motion by Carlson and a second by Geisler to approve the agenda. Any corrections or discussion? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, and the agenda is adopted. Why don't we approve the minutes from the February 4th, 2025 meeting?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Butler?
I move to approve the minutes from the February 4th, 2025 meeting.
Second.
Motion by Butler and a second by Carlson. Any corrections or discussion?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Geisler?
I sent staff one minor correction earlier.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Geisler will make that correction.
Thank you.
Okay, very good. Anything else? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, and that motion carries. We have five items on our consent agenda this evening. The first one is to adopt Resolution 25-33 calling for a public hearing to vacate the drainage and utility easements at 1210 117th Lane Northwest. On February 4th, the City Council approved Planning Case 25-4, final plat approval to create 21 lots for the purpose of building a 20-unit townhome and multifamily residential development. This plat was formerly titled Hidden Creek Woods 2nd Edition and has been renamed Coon Creek Commons. In order to construct a 20-unit townhome and multifamily residential development, the applicant is requesting the city vacate the entirety of the drainage and utility easements on the site, and then new drainage and utility easements will be dedicated along the entirety of Lot 21 on the plat. So we're looking to adopt the resolution to start the process of vacating the drainage and utility easements. A vacation petition may be initiated by the City Council upon adoption of a resolution by a four-fifths majority. Resolution 25-33 calls for a public hearing on March 18th, 2025, for council to consider the vacation. So this is to adopt Resolution 25-33, which calls for a public hearing on March 18th, 2025, for a vacation of drainage and utility easements. Next item on our consent agenda is to receive the schedule of electronic payments. We're looking to receive the schedule of electronic payments from January 30th, 2025 to February 12th, 2025. Next item on our consent agenda is to approve a First Amendment to the Purchase and Redevelopment Agreement 12258 Crooked Lake Boulevard. The original purchase and development agreement called for completion of the project by March 31st, 2025. Due to unanticipated plumbing and mechanical work, the buyer requests an extension of the completion date to June 30th, 2025. So we're looking to approve the First Amendment to the Purchase and Redevelopment Agreement with 246 Home Capital Incorporated. Next item on our consent agenda is to adopt Resolution 25-37, appointing John Urquhart to the Fire Civil Service Commission with the resignation of Commissioner L. Hofstedt. We had one vacancy. We solicited applications. We workshopped this, and we are appointing John Urquhart to the Fire Civil Service Commission. So we're looking to adopt Resolution 25-37, appointing John Urquhart to the Fire Civil Service Commission. The next and the final item on our consent agenda is to adopt Resolutions 25-35 and 25-36, accepting a police K-9 grant from AKC Reunite and amending the general fund budget. The police department applied for and received a grant of $7,500 from AKC Reunite to assist in replacing K-9 TAS. As a requirement of the grant, the police department will provide matching funds of $2,500 to purchase associated equipment from the existing 2025 budget. The $7,500 will cover the replacement K-9 and associated training for the new K-9 team. The purchase of a new police K-9 was not included in the 2025 budget, and per government accounting standards, is considered a capital expenditure. So we're looking to adopt Resolution 25-35, amending the 2025 general fund budget for a police K-9 grant from AKC Reunite, and to adopt Resolution 25-36, accepting the grant from AKC Reunite. And that is our complete K-9 consent agenda.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Carlson?
Motion to approve the consent agenda?
Second.
Motion by Carlson and a second by Armstrong. Any discussion or questions? All right. Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, and the consent agenda is adopted. And we are about ready to hold a public hearing, and we're going to get Mr. Hanson up here to talk about ordering projects. Mr. Hanson?
Thank you, Mayor and City Council. I have a quick presentation to do prior to the public hearing, to talk about our proposed 2025 street reconstruction program. So a little bit of background for the council and for the audience here. The streets that we have proposed for reconstruction this year have been previously rated as deficient and in poor condition, and our engineering staff, which plan these projects, we spend a lot of time talking with our public works crews, finding out where they spend the most time repairing streets and potholes, and that's how we base our plan. Back on July 23rd, 2024, we held a work session with City Council where we initially introduced this proposed program. So the first neighborhood that is proposed for reconstruction in 2025 is between 131st and 133rd Avenue, also between Coon Creek Boulevard and Shenandoah Boulevard. The scope of the work is to resurface the road, replace any damaged curb and gutter, driveway aprons, and then repairing the storm sewers and sanitary manholes. We will also be replacing plugged city fire hydrants and then the adjacent valves to those hydrants, and then upgrading all of the city lights and fixtures to LED standards. The next neighborhood is the Thousand Oaks neighborhood.
Hang on, Mr. Hanson.
We're not getting here.
You're not getting the presentation that's up there.
No. Well, that front row is open. We can move out there, I guess.
I'm sorry.
Oh, there we go. Thanks, Mr. Erickson.
So the next neighborhood is the Thousand Oaks neighborhood. This is a neighborhood that's south of Main Street or County Road 14, and then west of Olive Street. We are going to be resurfacing the roads completely and then replacing the damaged curb and gutter, very similar to the last neighborhood, replacing driveway aprons, repairing storm and sanitary manholes. And then in this neighborhood in particular, we will also be replacing segments of cast iron water main pipe. And then in addition, also any plugged fire hydrants and adjacent valves. A plugged fire hydrant is one that where the bottom of the hydrant exists within the groundwater table. So we have to plug the holes and then pump it out after we use it. It's one of those hydrants that we have, or it's the type of hydrant we have the most maintenance problems with. And then we will also be upgrading all of the city-owned streetlights, poles, and fixtures to LED standards. And then the last area is what we call the Thrush Park area. We've been doing some street reconstruction work in this neighborhood before. I think the last time we were there was in 2019 or 2018 or 2019. But again, we'll be resurfacing the road, replacing damaged curb, driveway aprons, repairing storm and sanitary manholes, also replacing any plugged fire hydrants and valves, and then upgrading our city-owned streetlights to LED standards. Our project schedule, so we have had a couple of open houses previously, one on October 1st and then one on January 22nd of this year. Both were the same. We provided the same information. It gave us an opportunity to answer questions about the project. Tonight, February 18th, we're here to hold the public and the assessment hearing and then order the projects. If council chooses to do that, that will take us to April 15th. We're staff, we will go out for bids, and then we would recommend a contract award for construction on April 15th, and then adoption of the assessments on May 6th. This spring, staff will have a meeting at the end of April. We'll find a city park that's generally within the project area, and then we will have schedules at that time. We'll also have the contractor there. So we will provide more information about the specific schedules of each of these neighborhoods prior to starting any work, which would happen at the beginning of May, and then take us through September, and then completing in early October. So like I said, letters will go out as well containing the construction schedule. We'll also contain responses to the frequently asked questions that we often get with these projects. We do provide weekly updates on our city website. Every Friday, it's a general update, a one-week look ahead on what the contractor is planning to do. Things, of course, are subject to weather, but it does give a good heads up to people on, you know, when certain major operations are going to be happening. And then residents also have the option to sign up for text messages. Estimated project costs will be spread over a number of city funds, and this is a very high-level estimate. That also does include contingencies as well as administrative and engineering, construction materials, testing times. The actual construction cost will be much less than what we're showing on this slide. But also, assessments will be part of the funding equation for the total project cost. So a lot of people do ask, and a lot of people are likely here tonight, wondering why the city assesses for these types of projects. Property taxes pay for approximately 50% of the street surfacing costs. So everybody throughout the city has already been paying for street reconstruction projects taking place in other neighborhoods throughout the city. The special assessment policy is to really have the assessments pay for the remaining 50%, but in practice, due to the orientation of properties and what we can assess, the city actually covers more around 70% of the street surfacing and curb and gutter costs that are taking place in these projects. Special assessments also allow the city to raise money without increasing the overall property tax levy, and it does also allow us to bond for street reconstruction projects as well. Special assessments apply to properties that impact the road but are exempt from taxation. So schools and churches also use the roadway system. They are also assessed. And just for clarification purposes, we're not assessing for the sewer water or the drains repair components of these projects. Those are paid for themselves through the utility funds. So our proposed assessment rates for 2025, single-family residential, all of the properties within the project that are single-family residential pay the same rate. It does not matter how much front footage you have along the road. If you are a corner lot or if you're an interior lot, they all pay the same. So the rate this year is $2,430. Duplex townhome apartment properties are assessed at $32 a front foot, so those assessments can vary, and commercial properties at $60 a foot, and then industrial properties at $77 a foot. Assessment payment options, the public hearing noticed that property owners for this meeting tonight contains all of the information on how to pay the assessment. There are different ways to be able to pay it off. We recognize these projects come up, and people don't expect it necessarily. They don't expect that an assessment is part of a reconstruction of their street. So we do provide a number of different options for people to be able to pay that. One option is to be able to pay the entire assessment. Assuming the council adopts the assessments on May 6th, between May 7th and June 7th, there's a 30-day interest-free period. They can just pay it off as soon as the council, the day after the council adopts it, presumably on May 6th, and they can pay it off interest-free. After that, it starts to accrue some interest at a rate of 4.48%. So if they pay it off between June 8th and November 15th, they'll pay that assessment plus a very minor amount of interest. Or residents, property owners, can choose to simply do nothing, and the assessment will just automatically appear on their property tax statement, starting in 2026. And then they can just continue to pay that off every year as part of their property taxes for 10 years. So that would look like, that would be $316 additional to their taxes every year for 10 years, if they choose to pay it off that way. So if there's questions about what the current amount owes is owed on the assessment, we encourage property owners to contact our assessing department. So what are the other cities around us charging? Every city does assess for these to be able to afford to maintain their infrastructure. And you can see, once again, Coon Rapids is at the lowest end of the spectrum for assessments in our neighboring communities. Notification forms, I always include this so that the property owners that are viewing this meeting see what the notification forms are going to look like this summer. These often appear on the front door, so if you use your garage door, a side door in your house, pay attention to that front door. But there will be periodic times where we have to turn the water off during the day between 8:00 a.m. and 4:00 p.m., and you'll get a notice 24 hours in advance describing the time for when we're going to do that. It'll be on your front door. It'll look like that left pink tag. And then all of the other notifications that could affect your street access will show up in a form that looks like one on the right. We do have videos on our city website that describe the entire process, start to finish, of what a street reconstruction project in the city of Coon Rapids looks like. There's also another video that describes a lot of the frequently asked questions that we get. We encourage residents to view those videos. And then we did get one written objection. I gave the council members each a copy of what that objection looks like. It came from a cul-de-sac within the Thrush Park neighborhood, residents that live along Uplander Street and 124th Avenue, and council is provided with that written objection. So with that, I'll turn it back to the council if there's any questions, and then if you want to open up and conduct the public hearing.
Mr. Hanson, it's an impressive letter of objection. It's all nine properties on the Uplander cul-de-sac.
Yes.
My question is, what's the condition of that compared to the other streets? And I know if we do all the other streets, it's really difficult to come in there and just do that one street, orphaned street later.
Yes.
And I know this kind of gets, we've had this conversation before where these get caught up. Our street isn't that bad yet.
Right.
But unfortunately, we're there doing the whole project at one time.
This is the most economical time to be able to reconstruct that street. So it's likely that most of that cul-de-sac is in better condition. It's the newest cul-de-sac. It was the last street within that neighborhood to be built. So it's about 22, 23 years old. But certainly, there's portions of the cul-de-sac that are in rougher shape and do need maintenance. We have found over many years of doing this that it's most economical to try to group these areas in together. It works best in terms of a cost for the project, and it also puts us on a very consistent maintenance regime. So one of the things we do with these projects, we come back a year later or two and then do crack sealing. We also do rejuvenators to bring that asphalt back up, because the best way to maintain it is just to hit it with those applications as quickly as possible. There are no assessments for those latter maintenance techniques that we use.
Okay, thank you. Questions of Mr. Hanson? Councilmember Butler?
Thank you, Mr. Hanson, for walking through this. I just have a super simple question about payments of assessments. So I know you walked through the three different options. You could pay all sort of up at once within a 30-day period. There's one where there's interest, but it's, I think, towards November, I think I saw, and then there's just getting it applied to your property tax bill. Could you do like a hybrid version of that? So if someone said, "I can't pay $2,400, but I can put, you know, 700 bucks towards it," does the city accept that portion, and then the remainder is added to the balance, or is that not how it works? I just don't know.
No, you wouldn't, we wouldn't be able to do it that way.
Thank you for clarifying.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Geisler, and then Councilmember.
Mr. Hanson, just generally speaking, when we do these reconstructions, how long are we talking about from the asset? Will it last, especially with the rejuvenation process that we do? You know, what kind of investment does this last for?
Yeah, so pavements in Minnesota are designed to last 20 years, but we anticipate with proper maintenance and consistent maintenance, we expect to get 35 to 40 years out of this. One of the things I should note that we're doing with this project is we're actually thickening the asphalt that is on these streets. Many of these streets were constructed with two inches or less of asphalt pavement. We're putting back three inches. I should also maybe expand on my response to Councilmember Butler. One thing that residents could do is they could pay the assessment with their property taxes for a couple of years if they choose, and then they would just have to pay off the balance, but we wouldn't be able to take like a $700 payment, as you suggest, in one payment and then pay the rest later, so.
So I'm sorry, I just want to clarify, Mr. Hanson. So you're saying you could do it sort of the opposite way, where you make the payments for, let's say, for your four years?
You could make it through your property taxes, and then you, you know, if you're, perhaps you're selling your house. Typically, that's a time when assessments are paid, and you would use the proceeds of the sale of your house to pay for it, but you would be able to pay the rest if you decide to at that point, but you just have to pay the remaining amount.
Councilmember Carlson?
Mr. Hanson, I think Councilmember Geisler asked a question to clear it up for me a little bit, but how old are the streets that are right around the cul-de-sac? So the cul-de-sac is 22, 23 years old. How old are the streets that are surrounding the cul-de-sac?
The other ones?
So most of the rest of the cul-de-sacs were built in the 90s.
So the Thousand Oaks neighborhood was chosen because of the age of the?
The Thousand Oaks goes back to 1973.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm in the wrong neighborhood.
The Thrush Park.
Thrush Park.
I assume you're talking about the Thrush Park neighborhood. Yeah, that's going to range from 1992 to 1999, most of them.
This would be the first time that those roads have been done over?
Yes, yes.
And would be switching from a two-inch to a three-inch?
Correct.
Any other work being done other than the possible curb gutter?
Curb and the utility work I talked about.
You mentioned water mains, but I didn't know if that was specific to this neighborhood?
No, just the plugged fire hydrants within the Thrush Park neighborhood and the ancillary valves that are near and within the groundwater table, near where those plugged hydrants are. Storm sewer catch basin replacements, and then sanitary sewer casting.
Is that, that fire hydrant work, is that part of regular routine maintenance? That's something I've been?
Well, this is a holistic replacement of the fire hydrant, just completely brand-new. So.
And that would include the cul-de-sac?
I don't believe there is one in that particular cul-de-sac. It's just wherever they happen to be, based on the groundwater table. But that neighborhood, we will be doing that work in that neighborhood. We'll be painting the rest of the hydrants that we are not replacing. All of them will be painted brand-new, to look brand-new, and to match our current standard of red.
So, Mr. Hanson, if we're using our normal, typical routine replacement, we would have to single out that cul-de-sac in 10 years or so if we're going to do it that way?
Yeah, it'd be the same process, yeah. And, you know, five, six years, it's going to be in pretty rough shape.
Thank you.
Other questions of Mr. Hanson? And, Mr. Hanson, when you say we paint them, we actually have a whole process. We sandblast them and do that whole, we completely renew them, really.
Yes, yes. And a lot of times in the past, we've had our public workforces do that, but here, in this case, we're actually including that work within the contract.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
Okay. Any other questions of Mr. Hanson?
Mr. Mayor, I apologize for asking this question, because you probably just asked it, but I was looking something up. On the cul-de-sac there, on Uplander, is the water main being replaced?
No.
Okay, I wouldn't think so, being 22-years-old.
No.
Okay, thanks for the clarification.
Okay. All right. With that, then, I think we'll open the public hearing. That's what we're up to, right? All right. We'll open the public hearing on this, and if you are here and like to address council on Resolution 25-16A, or 25-1-sub-8, all of those streets, this is the public hearing, and you can come up and address the council, public hearing, and the assessment hearing. Mr. Brody?
As we've noted, we have received the objections from all property owners. They certainly can speak to council, but they've sort of met their legal obligation by objecting both peers to the project and to the assessment, so, and they, like you said, we've acknowledged receipt of that, so that may save us some time if they don't want to come up and formally object, because they've already done so.
Does anybody want to come up to address council?
I have questions.
Please come up to the AMBO so we can hear you.
So I haven't seen a map, but just getting this piece of paper.
Could you, I'm sorry, could we get your name and address?
Yeah, my name is Jeff Hale. I live on 12147 Thrush Street Northwest. It's right on the end there. There's no exit out of the neighborhood. So the reason why I'm here today is because I'm, you know, I'm sure you've heard it before. I've lived in this town my whole life. I have. I lived in one other neighborhood over by Sand Creek School and moved over to Thrush about 10 years ago. I've never received a letter from the city saying, "We're going to charge you up and above what you normally pay for taxes and to charge interest on it." I was floored. I couldn't believe it. And then after hearing what I heard today, and I'm sorry, I've been very busy, so I haven't been able to do in-depth research on this, but it sounds to me like you haven't accepted any bids yet, or you haven't decided how much it's going to cost, but yet you're going to bill us in advance and charge interest on it if we can't pay it in full? I want to know how you're allowed to charge interest on taxes and how, when did this, I also, my other question is, how did this start? When has this ever happened before? In my 55 years of living here, it's never happened. And in my other neighborhoods, they've come through, redone the streets, just got a letter in the mail saying, "We'll be doing streets. You may be blocking, your driveway might be blocked off for a couple of days," something like that. Never been charged more taxes. Now, over the years, taxes go up. I assume that's how it would be paid for. I assume that that's how this would be paid for. Our taxes would just go up. I already pay about $5,000. If I pay this off in a year, that's a 50% increase on my taxes for that year. No. Is it too late to formally write? It's not too late?
Nope. This would be your opportunity if you wanted to object to the assessment.
I object.
And you should put it in writing.
I know it says in here you have to put it in writing, so I guess I have to sit down after this and write it?
Yeah.
Okay.
Bring it over to the city clerk here.
I don't object to the work being done, of course. I object to the way that it's being handled as far as, oh, you live here, you have to pay this, you know, suddenly. So I've never been to one of these before. Is this, do you wait till I sit down to go over my questions? Is this, do you wait till I sit down to go over my questions and answer them, or?
We wait for everybody to do the public hearing.
Okay.
And then see what we've got for similar complaints or?
Sure. Next question is, I heard them saying our crews have gone out and said, "Oh, yeah, these are the ones that need the most work." I mean, are these experts? Do, are they hired company that comes in and does an assessment, saying, "This needs to be replaced, this doesn't," or is it just like, "Ah, we haven't done this in a while?" That's one of my questions, because I just heard that, that's how things are, that they spend a lot of time doing maintenance and filling potholes. I've lived in Thrush for 10 years. I've never seen a city truck, other than the small ones that, you know, drive by. No one's ever done any work to my road. Let's see here. Yeah, that's it. I've asked all my questions. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. I'm writing questions down for you, Mr. Hanson, but you're probably writing them down, too. Is anybody else to address council for the public hearing? Yes, sir.
Hi, my name is Rob Orlikowski. I'm at 12208 Thrush Street, and I'm kind of going to echo my neighbor here. Can Mr. Hanson tell me the last time that there was work done on Thrush Street?
I wouldn't be able to have that off top.
Because I'm pretty sure it was recently, that they came in, put a new storm drain in, ripped the whole road up, did some runoff.
We did.
Okay, yeah. Okay, sure.
Thank you, Mayor. If I may, we did reconstruct certain streets within the Thrush Park neighborhood within the last five, six years. So I believe that's what the residents are talking about. I don't know exact details about what other kinds of maintenance we have done on the remaining streets, but every year, we're doing skin patching and pothole patching throughout. People may not notice it, but we do do it.
So that's what I was talking about. They have done work on our street, and to pay $2,400, I mean, what more can they do? So that's why I'm up here, and I oppose this, the way it's being handled.
So you want to be, you'll want to get that into the writing, then, so that, and leave it with the clerk?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, okay.
I'm Angie Kuz. I live on 12445 Uplander Street. I am the one who wrote the opposition letter.
Nice math, by the way. Nailed it, 30%.
Yeah. Thank you for noticing. I've lived at this residence for, since 2008. As neighbors in the neighborhood have mentioned, we did just have some work done on some of the roads, I think most of them anyway, in our, in that Thrush area. I think Mark said 2019. It's been recent that we had some work. Our neighborhood, our cul-de-sac specifically, in this neighborhood, there is no other way in or out. We don't have traffic. It's just us, just the people who live there, and our guests, and garbage trucks. We don't even have buses that come back there. So I spoke with everyone, we all, you know, myself, I'm a single mom, you know, to pay this, even, like I said in the letter, even paying it over 10 years, it's even more money. Yes, there's options, but just generally speaking, there's, you know, I have an elderly neighbor who was going to come with me tonight, but is ill and unable to make it, who lives on a fixed income, you know, and actually, he's on a corner, he actually lives on Thrush Street. So you'll see two of the Thrush Street addresses. They go into 124th, so that kind of inlet-outlet, the only one that we have. So that's why they're included on that assessment, but him specifically, he doesn't even use that road, he doesn't, he can't afford it, and lives on a fixed income, so that, this is significant, especially for him. We see that our road does not need major, you know, at least a one-inch increase on any sort of asphalt. Yes, we do have occasional regular wear and tear on, you know, the little potholes that get patched here and there. Those do not cost $2,400 per person to fix. We're okay with those, we're okay with those being a part of our taxes, we're okay with, you know, them being repaired, but when it comes to having, you know, curbs redone and things of that nature, our area specifically, we all oppose it. So that is all. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you. Mr. Hanson, do you want to interject a couple of answers here in between, while we're waiting to see if there's somebody else?
Sure.
First, though, Ms. Hanson, don't we have a way for seniors to defer the assessments? Specific to her example of the senior citizen there?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, we do allow for the council to authorize deferment of special assessments for seniors, anyone over 65-years-old, and there is interest that does accrue, but.
Oh, crap, that's what, I fit into that, too, then.
The assessment doesn't go away.
Right.
No, 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 the assessment doesn't go away. It's deferred until they sell the property or?
Correct. We also allow it for active-duty military personnel.
Okay, okay.
They'd be charged interest also?
A deferment.
Okay. So as far as the assessments, this is the way we've done it since I owned my first house here in 77?
Since 1994, we've been doing it this way, yeah.
And then, and then who, or how do you assess the quality of the streets?
Myself and my staff.
So trained engineers, basically?
Yes. And we also talk to our public works staff, so, but yes, it's internal city staff that do the ratings.
Okay, very good.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Carlson?
If you don't have any more questions, may I ask Mr. Hanson?
Of course you may.
Thank you. So, Mr. Hanson, this work in 2019 or so, was that a resurfacing, or was that a reclamation?
Same project, yeah. Same, similar, very similar project, yeah, correct, yeah.
So we had to do a section of it?
We did as much as we could afford at the time, and we did other neighborhoods throughout the city that year. I think we had four different street reconstruction projects in 2019. That was the year we did Foley Boulevard, the Bridgewater neighborhood. So we didn't do the whole, ideally, we would have done the entire neighborhood all at once, but we just felt like there were certain streets that had to be done, so.
So, Mr. Hanson, the only difference between this project and that project in 2019 is coming back?
Just a few years later, and assessments always go up, so if we wait, the assessments are going to be more in the future.
Well, and you had the slides up on the assessments, and I do know assessments, yeah, for sure, for sure, 30 years. As a matter of fact, I think my neighborhood's coming up next year. I know the amount goes up, and you had the slides that showed our comparison to other And again, what percentage of a typical, if we're just to, just to bill everyone like some cities do, what would that cost probably be?
Well, like I said, the assessments really intended to pay for 50% of the street surfacing costs, so all the work on the asphalt pavement, the driveways, the boulevard areas, the curb and gutter. But really, with the way the assessments are and how they're tied, they go up every year based on the construction cost index for the Minneapolis area, and the cost of doing these projects year after year, they really, they really pay for about 30%. So the cost to resurface the cul-de-sac, similar to Uplander Street, is about $100,000. So the assessments, if you were to total it up, it's about $30,000, so it's right in line with kind of what the assessments actually pay for in terms of what the true cost is of the work.
So this cul-de-sac had a reclamation after being about 17-years-old or so?
It was built in 2003.
2003, and there was a reclamation in 2019, and it was about 16?
No, 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 there was no, there's no, this is the original street.
Oh, it is, okay.
We're talking about other streets within the neighborhood have been reconstructed.
So Thrush Street was not reclaimed and?
No, no.
All right. I thought it was. All right.
No, we're not doing any, we're not proposing to redo any work that we would have done six years ago. These are all the remaining streets that weren't reconstructed before.
So there was some work done in the neighborhood?
Yes, work done in the neighborhood, but this is, you know, finishing off the neighborhood so that it's consistent across the board.
Okay, all right. Stay tuned for more questions, just in case. Anybody else here to address council for the public hearing on this?
I have follow-ups.
All right, go ahead.
And my pen is up here. I just have a question. You said that the project that was done in 2019 is similar to what's about to happen, right? Did residents get billed like we are today?
Yes.
Back then? What was that price?
I don't recall.
It would have been whatever the assessments were in 2019.
Thank you.
Probably 1,900 or something. They go up each year with inflation. Sure?
I'm a little confused here.
How about?
So I'm on Thrush as well, and there was some reconstruction to our road for runoff. There was new storm drains put in. I didn't imagine it. And you said this type of reconstruction lasts how long? The road will be good for how long?
We expect it to last 35 years.
Okay. And my road was done in 2019, parts of my road in front of my house? And it's 2025, six years later, you want another $2,400 from me?
Like I said, we're not redoing any of the work we did before.
You, yeah.
So then you won't be doing anything in front of my house?
You didn't, did you pay an assessment five years ago?
Yes, we did.
You did pay?
I would assume so.
If, well, because if you paid an assessment five years ago, you're not going to get assessed, no.
Correct. And we reviewed the assessment rule, so nobody should be getting assessed twice. So maybe one corner, if you're a corner lot, maybe one of the roads on one side of your house got reconstructed.
But even, but even in that case, then they wouldn't be assessed this time, because you're only assessed for one street.
It's where the driveway access is, is where we would assess a property.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. All right, let me just, okay. Is there anybody else to address council for the public hearing on this? Yes, please. Let's get this wrapped up, and then we'll go ahead.
Hi, Sharon Eisenstein from Thousand Oaks. Can you hear me?
Yeah, I'm sorry, would you give us your address, please?
915-124th Lane Northwest.
Okay.
I just have a couple of questions. Could you clarify what you had said about the deferred payment for 65 or older? Because we couldn't hear everything that she had said over there, so, just because we have residents also that are going to have asked me questions?
Yeah.
And I don't know the answer, so.
Yeah. Ms. Hanson, can you use your outdoor voice?
Yes, I'm just looking at our special assessment policy real quick here. We do allow for council to defer a special assessment for those that are 65-years or older. It is deferred. It does accrue interest, but it is deferred until the property sells or they are no longer living there.
Okay, thank you. The second question I have is, you had stated about townhouses, and that how were the townhouses for Thousand Oaks assessed? Because my understanding, only four out of the 24 were assessed. So none of the front of the houses in that face, 124th, there, that's the backside of their property. However, there's 24 townhouses, all that use the same entrance to their townhouses, which is a private road off from 124th. So four townhouses out of 24 were assessed, the remainder were not assessed as far as we were notified.
Mr. Hanson's got an answer for that, I'm sure.
Good, thank you.
Yeah, so everybody, so townhomes and condominiums that have their direct access onto a private driveway or a private road are assessed differently. We take the frontage along the public road, we multiply by the multifamily rate, and then we divide by the number of units. So it turns out to be about a third of what a single-family residential assessment is. So I believe every, so first of all, everybody in that neighborhood, whether they are a single-family home on the main public roads, or they are a unit that is on one of the private drives, is getting an assessment. It's just the latter ones are paying about a third of what the single-family homes are, and that's because they still have their private driveway and road to maintain. And that has been the case throughout our history.
Okay, and that makes sense, thank you. And my last question is, years ago, our streets have always been, we've always been told our streets are not as wide as they should be. So the questions that the associations are having right now is, during this time, are they going to widen our streets to make them more like they're supposed to be?
Mr. Hanson? I'm pretty sure I know the answer to that.
No, is the answer. Yeah, and I could explain why, but it just would not be practical.
No, that's fine. That was the question, and then I think that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. It would probably require permission from every single property there and some reserving and?
Well, the driveways are short. The setbacks in that neighborhood are very short, so it would create some very steep driveways.
Oh, sure. Okay, anybody else here to address council for the public hearing here? Yes?
I have just heard a question.
Okay, come on up, that's fine. Just give us your name and address, please.
So my name is Jennifer Heckle. I am at 2050 122nd Avenue Northwest. I'm not sure which neighborhood that is yet. So my husband and I bought our first home in April of 2021. Throughout that time, property taxes have increased, homeowners insurance has increased due to, you know, everything increasing because of the economy. When it comes to the bids, so if they're planning, so the amount right now is like $2,400 for those in the single-family homes. When it comes to the bid aspect of it, is there like a minimum amount of that bid requirement to make it so it's $2,400? Or if the bids come down low, does that mean that the amount is just done, settled even?
$2,430 is the amount we'll be assessing single-family homes this year, correct, Mr. Hanson?
Yes.
Yeah, irrespective of the bid.
Okay. And that doesn't matter what work is being done? So even if some part of the neighborhood, certain extra things have to be done and not as specific, it's plain Jane?
Right. Well, because some of, because some of the funding comes out of the water utility fund, some comes out of the storm utility fund, but when we reconstruct a street, we use the straight $2,430 per single-family home.
Okay. So, because the one concern I have about that is, you know, the pricing of everything is going up. You have the families that are potentially living paycheck to paycheck. Basically, it's to the point where, you know, property taxes are going up, okay, so now I'm forking up money for that. Then you have now this $2,430 additionally, you have options to pay it upfront or, you know, included in your property taxes. Well, now you're spending even more money regardless for that. That's, ideally, that's unfair. That's not right. Like, I understand that things are, you know, it's part of life, it's part of being a homeowner, yippee. Why, it's not okay to be basically forcing people to pay for something that one doesn't necessarily have to do with them, because it could be issues further down the road, not necessarily what's in front of your house. That's just my opinion.
Okay. So if you would like to formally object, you can leave your, with the city clerk over there.
Thank you.
Yeah. Okay, yes, sir?
I just have a question.
Oh, can you come up to the?
I don't need to come up.
Okay.
Have you ever thought about a franchise fee? Just ask him.
Yeah, okay.
Maybe you can explain it for people that don't understand what a franchise fee is.
Is there anybody else here to address council for the public hearing here tonight?
That would be it.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, so I am Pauline Lee. We're at 20
Okay, so I am Pauline Lee. We're at twenty-one twenty, one hundred and thirty-first Lane Northwest. My, so I am here to formally object. Um, my issue is, there doesn't seem to be anything wrong with these roads whatsoever. And again, getting a notice saying you owe twenty-four thirty again when property taxes are going up. I just fail to understand why, this just seems unnecessary. And, and nobody has been able to tell me any reason why this needs to be done. It just seems like government wasteful spending. So again, I'm, I'm here to formally object. I, I, twenty-four thirty to be paid in full, or I'm being charged five percent interest rate. So where do I formally object?
City clerk, right there.
Okay.
Thank you. Mr. Hanson, you don't happen to have your, your rating sheets with you and I, do you? Your street rating sheets?
I don't.
Okay.
No.
Because it's, it's one of the things we go through every year at the workshop is, is we go through every street and it's all rated for what condition it's in and when you think it needs to be done.
I think the, it's important to, to point out though that, you know, we, we want to reconstruct these streets before they are completely failed and completely falling apart. This is the most economical, economical time and way to be able to resurface the streets at a very low assessment. Our neighbors charge quite a bit more in other cities, so there is certainly variability on the different, you know, the, the pavement conditions within a segment of street. But certainly cul-de-sacs are going to be worse, where you have the heavy garbage truck traffic turning on the outer edge of the cul-de-sac bulb. Street intersections are often going to have much worse pavement conditions in between. If it's on a tangent section or a straight section of road, it may not be quite as bad. But economically, this is the best way to maintain the streets. Plus, everything is on a consistent, even maintenance plane. So we can program out our future maintenance operations in a very consistent manner and get it all done consistently across the board in a logical neighborhood zone.
Alright, anybody else to address counsel for the public hearing? Yes, sir? Please state your name and address.
Ron Weinberger, one hundred and thirty-second Avenue. Have you assessed the utility vehicles that come through there? They're the ones damaging these roads. It's not us. Is there any assessment for them, the trash, utility vehicles? Those are the heavy vehicles coming through there.
Yeah, um, not, not specific to this, they pay a lot of taxes. I'm not sure what we get from them, but?
So is it easier to go to the masses than hit them?
Yeah, I don't know about that, sir.
I don't know, and I think the way it was assessed was unfair too. I mean, we just gotta notice, we just do, and if it isn't, you gotta pay. And then those who get a waiver for sixty-five and over, there's an interest rate? What is that?
Yeah, well, you don't have to pay it till you're dead, so.
That's not funny, really. That's actually pretty rude.
Okay, alright, I'm sorry.
So could you give us the interest rate if we defer?
Yeah, the interest accrues.
What is the interest rate if it's deferred?
Four point four eight, wasn't it?
Same, same rate over the life of whatever.
Mr. Mayor, can I just speak to the interest rate? So the interest rate portion of the project is paid for with the city issuing bonds. So the interest rate that we use for assessments is tied to a future issuance. So we typically will take the Bloomberg value or the BVAL for a double A Muni and then add a percentage, because we were assessing you of quite a few months before we're actually going to go to market. So we want to make sure that the interest rate is enough so that the bond isn't subsidizing the assessments. So that's, your interest rates on the assessments are tied to, the city is going to issue a govern, a general obligation bond for the remainder of the street costs.
So it's, so it's not a number we pull from the air, it's a number we?
Correct, it is tied to city issuing debt.
Sure. Okay, anybody else to address counsel for the public hearing?
Your honor, before you close the public hearing, I do want to remind folks that when we close the public hearing, that that's your time, and the public hearing was your time and opportunity to object in writing. So those folks who indicated that they were going to object to the, to the assessment should come over to the city clerk and make sure they've done that in writing.
No, they have, I'm sorry, Ms. Brody, all they have to do is just give her their name and address, correct? They don't have to write a big letter or anything, they just?
Well, I'd ask that they probably write a letter saying they're objecting. Just write it on a piece of paper. I object to my assessment with their name and address. And that way, for those folks that already filled it out, this one right here, you're good to go.
Yeah, oh yeah, so everybody from?
Come on over, yep, I prefer that you would.
Yeah, so everybody from Uplander and then the, yeah, anybody that signed this one is already in.
Yes.
Okay. We'll just give them a moment to finish that. Mr. Mayor, our discussion will come after you close. Yeah, I'm afraid if you, if we start it now, it'll just stir up the republic. No, makes sense.
Uh, sorry, one more thing. A couple of my questions didn't get answered.
About?
Once you gavel, is it, I, I don't get answers to those questions. My questions are, like I had stated, lived here before, or fifty-five years, never had an assessment. Even though the streets have been done my whole life, was born here in Mercy Hospital. Also, when did it become legal to charge interest on taxes? Is there a law?
These are assessments. These are assessments that are contributing to the project.
Yes.
And so, yes, yes, we can contribute, we charge the interest that we pay. The same interest that we pay on the bond for the project is what the interest was, we're charged.
What I'm saying is that, is there a Minnesota statute that says a city can charge interest on taxes?
Mr. Hammer.
Mr. Mayor, counsel, sir, Minnesota statute? Four twenty-nine allows for municipalities to assess, so that's four twenty-nine. And a couple of your other questions, in two thousand nineteen, we did Partridge, one hundred and twenty-third, one hundred and twenty-fourth, one hundred and twenty-third lanes. The assessment at that time was two thousand and seventy dollars, so it's gone up about three hundred and fifty dollars over the last six years. Four twenty-nine allows municipalities to assess for improvements to benefiting properties. This, as, as Mark had mentioned, we've been doing this since the mid nineteen nineties. And we're almost done touching every street in the city, and that will occur probably by the end of this decade, like twenty twenty-eight, twenty twenty-nine. The way we determined assessments in the beginning is to evaluate a reconstruction area before and after, so you identify a benefit. And what the council at that time decided to do was take that benefit and cut it in half. So at that time, when we first started this, I think the benefits were around nine hundred dollars. And the council said, we're going to cut that in half and we're going to charge four fifty. And then all we've done since the beginning of that is add the construction cost index over the years to get to the number that we're at today. So we started really low, we cut that number in half, and that's where we've ended up over the years.
So the nineties is when people started getting letters in the mail saying you have to pay extra above your taxes?
Well, they would have received a notice that we are going to be reconstructing your roadway. Same thing you did, come on down, answer questions, tell us what your concerns are, where might some improvements be needed, how might we impact you, yeah?
But that's the question. I've received those letters in the past and they've come through and redone the roads. It never said you're going to pay above your taxes, what you're, you know, you have to pay for the project.
There's, there's two types of improvements. One would be a street reconstruction, which is happening here. So we're really taking out the roadway surface and putting a new one in. What you may have received is we're doing a seal coat, we're doing a reclamation, we're doing a crack sealing, we're doing some other sort of a maintenance treatment, which are covered through your standard taxes.
So four twenty-nine, when did that become law?
Mr. Brody?
Before, decades, forever.
Decades ago, okay, so it's just never happened before?
It, it's happened every year in this, we, every year about this time, we have this exact same hearing for some street reconstruction project in the city of Coon Rapids since the mid nineties. So we've been doing that for thirty years. Exact same process we're following tonight, exact same process we did in nineteen ninety-four. And so it just got into your neighborhood this year. Um, and unfortunately, as you've seen, there's a cost to that, and, and that's, but, but that's the process we've used since we've started. And again, I would encourage you to look at four twenty-nine, that outlays the whole process that we follow under state statute, because obviously we're obligated to do so. Including why I wanted to make sure we got our written objections in, and I think we have, so we can?
Did everybody got your written objection in over here? If you had any written objection?
To the assessment.
Okay, yes? Sure?
I want to get clarification on this surety bond. So you charged the interest and you're basing it on Bloomberg that. But you said that in the interest, you're going to charge this fee plus enough charge. So basically, if I understand it correctly, if you can't pay this in full, you have to pay this based on the interest for the surety bond, but we're going to add more to it because we're going to charge you more too to do that. Is that correct?
You're not getting charged more than what, what, it's twenty-four thirty and it's four point four, four point four eight percent interest.
Okay, so your, your, for the surety bond, it's going to be four point four eight percent interest?
I'll speak to, so we assess these projects far before we actually go out to issue the bonds. So there's a little bit of a buffer there when we set the rate earlier, because we don't know what the market's going to do. So we potentially will ask the council to issue bonds for this project if it's approved, probably sometime in May and June. And so it all depends on when we go out for an issue, what kind of bids we get. So we've had it in the past, especially with interest rates low, were low, that we set our, our assessment rate in the one some percent, and then we go to issue bond and it was up in the three to four percent. So the, because we do the assessment so early, there's a little bit of a buffer there that's tied to the market forty-five days ahead of the assessment hearing. So the four point four, or whatever interest rate was set for this one, we're not going to change that regardless of what our actual bond issue interest rate will be. But it is tied to, it's set based on what that, what it will likely be, and that's a advisement of our municipal advisors, elders, so.
Thank you. Okay, I'm going to close the public hearing. Is this it? Alright, closing the public hearing. Counsel, questions? So, Mr. Hanson, so the streets that, that were, were redone, they were, they're probably in that Thrush Park, they're probably the ones that are currently not being redone then, the ones that are, I'm sorry, like Partridge, one hundred twenty-fourth Avenue, one hundred twenty-third Lane?
We're not redoing any of the work that we did in two thousand nineteen.
Okay, so those are the ones from two thousand nineteen.
And nobody would have been, and anyone that was assessed for that work wouldn't be assessed now.
Okay, and if, and if, and if we did something on Thrush, it would have just been tangential to that project on one hundred twenty-third? Alright, but certainly not assessed, okay. Okay, counsel, questions? Mr. Mayor? Counselor Rukuskobyak?
Comment, then, then a question, but, you know, we talked about how long we've been doing this. You know, we've been doing it this way for thirty years, and we think we're going to get through the cycle of having everything done within the next five years. As a council, we have talked about how are we going to pay for roads in the future? And we will have that discussion probably in a few years once we're through the cycle, but it would seem maybe unwise to go back and change it this late in the game, because we've established this protocol for the city. But that said, I think, you know, a lot of good points from the folks that have spoken here. And it sounds like some of the folks in this room don't think this street is so bad. And I know that you're a professional and you assess them. But I'm just wondering, I mean, are we setting our standard too high? I mean, are these streets, could they go another five years and then do this whole area in five years?
Yes, but it would be more expensive to, and some of these cul-de-sacs are the furthest away from the main road, so we would be traversing over the, the newly reconstructed roads and potentially risking some damage there. Yeah, I mean, they could go a little bit longer, but it will be more expensive in the future, and the assessments will, following our process that has been in place for thirty years, will be more than what they are now. So I think, you know, I'd rather, if I was, I, I certainly empathize with the residents that are concerned. And we do offer, we, we do acknowledge the assessment, and usually it's, it's the assessment that's the concern here. I think most people would be happy to have a new road, a brand-new road in front of their house with fixed drainage, the intersections and everything, utilities and reliable fire protection. But, you know, it, it's, it's, certainly they could, they could last a little bit longer, but this is the most economical time. We do offer numerous ways to, to pay for the assessments over a period of ten years, so.
Mr. Hanson, I don't, I don't recall such a concerted pushback before. And I guess my, my question is, no matter when we do these streets, we're going to be driving, they're going to be traversing over roads that have already been redone, right? Because they are, you, you've already done Partridge, and we've already done one hundred and twenty-fourth and these sections here, correct?
Yeah, yeah.
I know a lot of times what happens is, we're not hearing from the rest of the neighbors, you know, and there's, there's, there's a good chance that an even greater percentage of the neighborhood is going, yeah, I'm ready for my street to be redone. Oh, I guess I should have gone down there and encouraged them, but do we ever do surveys as well? We don't, we just do the assessment, street assessments.
Yep.
And when, when, I know we like to go out for bids early, because we get the best pricing on it. When, when do you, when do you anticipate going out for bids on this?
So within the next couple of weeks will be, well, if the council approves the project and we move forward, the plan would be to start advertising within a couple of weeks, finishing up our permit applications and, and process that we need to follow to be able to construct the project. But we would have bids anticipated come back to council for approval in, in April.
Mr. Mayor?
Counselor Member Butler?
Uh, Mr. Hanson, I, I was just curious, so I, I'm looking at the map and it shows how like Partridge and some of the other neighboring streets, you know, had been done in two thousand nineteen. And forgive me, I'm new, so this might just be a silly question, but can you walk through why the rest of the neighborhood wasn't then done in like twenty twenty or twenty twenty-one? And I, I know part of it's just where are other streets in disrepair, but I'm just thinking about like, okay, neighbors see half their neighborhood's done.
Much of the, the intent was to come back in a relatively short period, within five, six, so that, these streets have been shown on our plan, our long-range plan for, for years.
Okay, thank you.
We just only have so much money that we can, and so many miles, I would certainly like to do more, but we can only, we have budgets that we have to live in, you know, within, so.
Mr. Mayor?
Counselor Member Carlson?
Yeah, I know it may seem like a small thing, but I am glad that we're switching to the three-inch pavement. I think we'll get a lot more wear out of our roadways that year. I know when we had the, the hot discussions on the garbage hauling, you know, especially with respect to cul-de-sacs, one of the biggest arguments for switching to organized hauling was to reduce the trucks, because the way the trucks go around the back, the bottom of the cul-de-sac. And, you know, we did not go with organized hauling, and so we could potentially have twelve trucks. And so we could potentially have 12 trucks. I don't know what, what day of the week you guys have. I'm, I'm Wednesday. But you couldn't potentially have 12 trucks in your neighborhood on those days. And I'm hoping that the, you know, a three-inch surface would help us cut down potential damage from the garbage trucks. And it sounds like there's no bus stops, so only heavy vehicles you'd have would be garbage trucks. But I am glad that we're, we're doing that to get more wear out of our, out of our roadways. And I would hope we wouldn't be back in this neighborhood for, especially with the three-inch asphalt, for another 35 years.
Not likely within the timeframe that most of these people are living here. You know, we, we, we want people to only have to deal with an assessment one time when they're living in their home. But eventually, you know, regardless of which city you live in, all cities have to use some form of, you know, revenue generation to be able to afford to maintain their streets. We don't get any funding from the state or from any other government agencies. This is city, city funds, that, and we have 220 miles in Coon Rapids that we have to maintain those streets.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor. Counselor Member Armstrong.
Yeah, I, I just, I just want to know, let the people know that came up here and, and spoke tonight. I, I understand, I really understand where you're coming from. My neighborhood is going to be done in, I think, three or four years. And hopefully, by that point, I'll be retired. But I'm gonna be, I'm gonna be looking at this same kind of situation in three or four years. Ours actually had been put off, and correct me if I'm wrong here. Ours got put off again because of what it costs to do these streets. And our neighborhood had to be pushed back and pushed back, because there were others that needed to be done first or needed to be dealt with. And trust me, as we go through these things, and I see the number go up and up and up, I'm pretty much resigned myself to the fact that I'm not gonna be paying $2,400 in, in three years when it's my turn to go through this. So I appreciate your passion, and I know where you're go, where you're coming from. And things have been, things have been challenging over the last few years. And so I don't, I would just want you to know, it's not falling on deaf ears.
Mr. Mayor.
Counselor Member Carlson.
I'd just like to add to that, Councilmember Armstrong and Councilmember Guskowjak. I said, my neighborhood's coming up next year. And I, we're all in different places financially, and it does trouble me. It really does trouble me with all the rising costs of everything, rising taxes, rising insurance, rising costs. And, and, as a city, we face those rising costs as well with our construction and reconstruction. And, and what's a, you know, a project this year, Lord knows, 10 years ago was a lot cheaper, and 10 years from now, it'll probably be a lot more expensive. And so it really does, it really does tear at my heart when I hear, you know, some of the financial difficulties that these can, can cause. And so I just, I, I do, like Councilmember Armstrong, I want you to know that I, I hear what you're saying.
Mr. Mayor. Counselor Guskowjak. I'm sorry. Counselor Geisler. Sailor G.
Thank you, sir. I, I, I agree. I'm eagerly awaiting for my special assessment to roll off from the time when my street was redone about eight, nine years ago, I believe is what it was. It, it, it is, it is a cost, but, you know, I, I do think what it comes down to here is we're really talking about, you know, an ounce of prevention versus a pound of pain. Every time the crews are going out spot, spot patching and doing the small little fixes everywhere around the city, those build up, and those get expensive, and then that drives higher levies every year from this. Yes, this is a, a one-time hit that can be spread out, but it is, it is an intensive hit. But the reason why staff has chunked these pieces out is to do it in the most cost-effective way possible to try to help keep levy pressure down, so we can keep those increases every year down or as low as we can. And I, I appreciate the fact that, you know, other, other cities are hitting individual properties harder when they do this work versus spreading it out over the whole city. But either way, the bill comes due. What I worry about is if we chunk up little parts, or we drop one street, or one little cul-de-sac here or there, be it this one or any other one, we still end up in a situation where it will come due. It will be more expensive later. Construction costs only go up, especially in the roadway category. We've seen that statewide. So, you know, I, this is very painful, but I do, I do believe that staff is trying to provide the most cost-effective and the least impactful way to do this work to as many residents as possible within the city every single year. And we have done, and we've done that for many, many years. So I, I, I do know that staff works very hard at this. I know that they don't want to just willy-nilly have people try, pay more. It, it is for a purpose, it is for a plan. It is to keep our city nice and have a high-quality community to live in. So, thank you.
Yeah, we don't, we don't take this lightly at all. I mean, it's... We, we look at these streets in a long time in advance, and we try and systematically go through, do the reconstruction as they make sense. And, and I understand, I mean, insurance has gone crazy this year. Property taxes are, county's gone up 15% this year. But I, it's, I think you have to keep moving forward, or, or we're just kicking the can down the next year or the year after that. So, yeah, it's not deaf ears, and I'm, I, but, I, I, I support, I support the process, so. Is it about eight years? We live on the same street.
Yeah, about eight years ago.
Yeah, I was wondering when I was gonna fall off. Anything else?
Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Counselor Member Carlson.
Make a motion to adopt resolution number 25-1, sub 6A, ordering the improvement. Ordering the improvement, and a supermajority vote is needed on this. And Mr. Brody, may I read the second one?
Why don't we take them one at a time, since they need different...
So I'll stop at that first motion.
Okay. Second. We have a motion by Carlson and a second by Armstrong. Is there further discussion on this?
Mr. Mayor, can you have our city...
Oh, excuse me. Could you have our city attorney explain the supermajority? What would that mean without one council member present?
Well, with one, with or without one council member present, it requires six votes of the council, so tonight would require unanimous decision.
All right, now, and just to be further, I, this is a hard vote for me right now, because, I mean, we all make good points, we've been doing this a long time. But when you've got a whole list, you got a whole cul-de-sac, saying they don't think they want it, they don't think they need it right now, I mean, if we had just one more signature on this line for the lady on 124th, or the house on 124th, it's very hard for me to go forward with the project. I don't know if there's time yet to give this another two weeks to go out and reassess, or at least have myself go out and reassess the condition of those streets. The area that is being done there, it's mostly that sandy, good sandy soil, and the road's only 20-some years old. So I'm having a hard time kind of getting behind a couple of these roads, understanding that it's a project in itself. So I, yeah, this is, this is tough for me. So one no vote, you know, kills the whole project. Is there any thought of assessing these streets another time? Or getting, getting the assessment from you as, in terms of the grading? I, I don't, what do you think? Is there any, doesn't sound like there's much support for that consideration.
Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, Counselor Armstrong.
Yeah, this is, this is only the second time I've, I've gone through this. So as far as the, as far as the process goes, I'm, I've kind of got mixed feelings. I think you touched on it a little earlier. We're doing, there's, what, 435 units? Or homes involved in this entire project? And, and again, I'll, I'll, I'll say, I understand this, this, the, the list of, of names here. And I'm, I am very, very glad they've done this, and they've come out, and they've used their voice. And because, I don't know what the number is, 10% of the people would actually go to this extent. So kudos to the people that have done this. Again, from a cost-effectiveness standpoint, that's where I run into it. You've, you've got, including the, the names that were there tonight, let's say we got 20 names out of 345, or 435 properties. Can you just pick the whole project up and say, "Okay, let's pick the next one on the list and go there instead"? Or, or how does that actually even work?
And, and a part of the challenge is the cul-de-sac, and, and we've run into it before, where the cul-de-sac doesn't get the traffic of all the streets around it, but you can't come back in and do just the cul-de-sac later.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Guskowjak.
Great points by both you council members on, on that. You know, 435 houses versus, you know, eight, or 10, or 12 that are in opposition here. And, and, you know, it would be very hard to, I mean, when I think about it, I mean, the roads are gonna have to be redone at some point within the next five years or so. Not only the roads, but again, the infrastructure underneath. You know, like you said, for fire protection and water and everything to be the way they should be. Because, you know, we all pay taxes, and that's, we've got to keep that infrastructure set, so. Still a hard decision for me.
Mr. Mayor.
Counselor Member Geisler.
So I, I, you know, I, I have a deeply professional job, and I deeply respect the amount of education and skill and talent of the staff of, as being engineers, of being civil engineers, of understanding what that is. These are educated folks who know this job specifically. Like many things, when you call an expert, there are things that they will point out that you may not know look bad until it's a gaping hole in the ground or filled with gravel. The, these are the kinds of things that, that what we pay them to do is to inform us and be our subject matter experts on this type of work, and to provide us the best plan. I, I, I struggle a little bit of questioning that skill as a council. This is, this is what we hire them for. I empathize immensely with the costs that come with it, but nothing is free either. A, a new road is a new road. Five years from down, from, from now, it'll be another, you know, if it's 2,400 now, it could be 2,700, 3,000. You know, we don't know what, what's gonna happen with those rates going forward. So, and, and, and like I said, a holistic project is always better per square foot than spot projects. That's, we, we've seen that elsewhere in the city. We know that. So I, I, I worry about kicking the can on anything. If we're gonna be working in a portion of, of the city that is due, you know, most asphalt is 20 to 25 years, and it is dunskeys. You know, and you might only have one intersection that's really bad, or another one that's nearby, but you can't just do the one little chunk, and then you just have weird patchworks. It doesn't work as effectively. So I, I, as, as much as this could be very painful to do, I, I do think this is the best route forward.
As a reminder, we have a motion and a second on the table. Is there any further discussion? Mr. Stemwettle. Let's hear it from the city manager.
You know, I, you know, from my perspective, the, the value in the street reconstruction process is providing consistency. And so to the extent that we start to deviate within that plan, starts to create inconsistency, and therefore, potential inequities across how that plan is applied. So over the course of the last 30 years, certainly, there have been areas, blocks, you know, segments of a block that have contested the assessment, maybe didn't want it. But we've applied it consistently, because frankly, that's the best way for us to reach our end goal, and to make sure that it's fair to all the residents, because, you know, we all, we all use the public streets. You know, in my neighborhood, I, I use my street more than others. And so I'm paying for sort of the upkeep of my particular street, whereas the rest of the city is paying for 70% of my street when it gets reconstructed. And so that model has worked very well for the city for many years. The city of Anoka, I think that example is provided, you pay triple. I've got some friends who lived there when their street was done, they paid for everything. The, the water, the sewer, street reconstruction. Before I moved to Coon Rapids, I was lucky enough to have a street reconstruction on my block right before I moved, so I got to pay for that and then moved to Coon Rapids. And, and that was 10 years ago, and that was $5,000. So I think our, the way we do it's very effective that way, that we're, we're allowing our city tax base to pay for 70% of the street reconstruction cost, which is different than the maintenance you see on a more of a regular and seasonal basis. And you're paying 30%. And that ratio has provided, has proved to be a really effective ratio for Coon Rapids over the years, and fairly predictable. And yes, it's, you know, it's a spike in cost. But for 30 years, people have experienced that spike in cost. And only because we've done it consistently, we've been able to keep up with our streets. And I don't think you have to go too far to see some, maybe not neighboring communities, but not too far away, where they've deferred maintenance for far too long, and now they're behind the eight ball, and they can't catch up. They, they can't bond their way out of it. And then those streets, the, the magnitude of, of maintenance that's required now is, you know, double and triple the expense, because they didn't reconstruct it five years ago. Now they have to go in there and, you know, doing patches of wide swaths of the street. And so now we're paying for our mistakes, it's compounding. And so that's, I just don't want to get to the point where we're allowing, it's not to say that the, the argument isn't a valid one, we should really focus on, is that street, does it need that reconstruction? And Mr. Hanson's staff is saying, yes, these streets need that reconstruction. Is it terrible today? Maybe not, that's because we're getting ahead of it. So three years from now, it isn't falling apart at your feet. So I just urge council to consider that applying it consistently is truly the value when it comes to these programs, and to deviate from that, I guess, gets to be a little concerning.
All right, we have a motion and a second to adopt resolution number 25-1, sub 6A, ordering the improvement. Is there any further discussion?
Mr. Mayor.
Counselor Member Butler.
I had one quick question for Mr. Hanson too, and I'm sorry if this was in your PowerPoint. Can you remind me how long the construction project itself is? Like, you know, are they gonna be out there for a couple of weeks, a couple of days, you know, longer than that?
The, the construction project has three different neighborhoods. So the contract is intended to go from the beginning of May to approximately the beginning of October. But the actual work within these particular neighborhoods is gonna be more like eight weeks to 10 weeks, depending on if there's more significant underground utility work to be done.
Thank you.
So schedules will be provided that will define that, that range to all of the property owners before any work begins.
That, that's helpful. The, the reason I was curious about that is that, you know, in addition to the, the frustration, of course, of getting this assessment and the work that's gonna come with it, if we were to carve out a street or a couple of streets, the rest of that neighborhood still will get the work done this summer. So that could lead to a situation where you're gonna deal with the construction, because all of your neighbor's streets are going to get construction this summer. And then we're gonna come back in a couple of years, and we're gonna do construction again just for your street, and it will cost more, because, and Mr. Hanson, can you correct me if I'm wrong? I assume the assessments never gone down in the 30 years.
Right.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Hanson, later in the meeting on item 15, we're actually going to be ordering all new streetlights for this neighborhood too, correct? Because that's part of the reconstruction process?
Yes.
Yes, I thought. Okay, we have a motion and a second. Do we have further discussion?
Mr. Mayor.
Counselor Guskowjak.
I don't think we need further discussion. I mean, you've all made valid points. I'm glad we had this discussion. Councilmember Geisler, excellent points. Staff, excellent points. And in my history here on the council, our staff recommendations have always been the right way to go. We're not doing anything frivolously. You know, we put a lot of thought into this. So I will have to go with, with the recommendation.
Is there any further discussion on this? As a reminder, we have a motion and a second to adopt resolution number 25 dash one, sub six A, ordering the improvement. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And that motion carries.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Carlson.
I'd like to make a motion to adopt resolution number 25 dash one, sub eight, approving plans and specifications and ordering advertisement for bids.
Second.
Motion by Carlson, second by Geisler. Is there discussion on this? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Uh, opposed? Okay. And that motion carries. Thank you all for coming. Um, I'm not sure what happens with the contested things. I imagine they can, you deal with that later?
At the assessment hearing in May, or for adoption in May, um, and then at that point, uh, they filed their objection. If they wish to continue, if those assessments are adopted, then they'll have an opportunity to, to go to district court if they want to or choose to.
Thank you.
And they'll get continued notice.
Thank you. Mr. Hanson.
I will be sending letters to the people that object to describing in detail what their processes.
Oh, good, good.
Even better.
All right. All right. Um, okay. Thank you for, uh, let's see, what do we got? Any else on this one? Item eight, dis- consider adoption of ordinance 2327, amending the city code, section 13 dash 1300, stormwater drainage utility. Um, Mr. Hammer?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, council. Yeah.
Let me just read this.
I'm happy to give you a brief intro if you'd like.
All right.
Um, we're, we're looking to adopt ordinance 2327, uh, for the stormwater drainage utility. Uh, the, the only change to this is the addition of a sod farm land use designation to the RAF. It's just the way of calculating stormwater utility fees. So, uh, we did update this uh, late last year and this was brought forth by council as something for consideration. And we've talked it through. We've been in work session. And so this is the final step in that process for adopting. And I'm happy to answer questions.
Very good. Anybody have any questions? And Mr. Hammer?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Carlson.
Make a motion to adopt ordinance 2327, amending chapter 13 dash 1300, stormwater drainage utility.
Second.
Motion by Carlson, second by Griszkowiak. Is there a discussion? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And that motion carries. Item number nine, um, we have to take this off the table first, right? Okay.
Mr. Mayor, I move to take planning case 25 dash one off the table for consideration.
Second.
Motion by Geisler, second by Carlson to take the item 25 dash one off the table. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? And that is off the table. Um, Mr. Patzner is back.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, members of the city council. Um, so I'm bringing back the item, uh, 25 dash one, uh, request for, um, design flexibility for Club Car Wash at 2550 Coon Rapids Boulevard. And I have just a couple updated images to show as part of my presentation. Um, just to go over really quickly, the applicant, uh, is requesting design flexibility in order to paint the brick on the north face of the building at 2550 Coon Rapids Boulevard. It's the old Coon Rapids Express Car Wash. Um, Club Car Wash bought the building and would like to paint the building to match their branding. Um, there's a requirement in the Port District that at least 30% of the, the face of the building facing the street has to be, uh, of one of the approved materials, one of which is brick. The existing building does comply with that requirement because more than 30% of the building is brick. However, um, the aesthetic element of the requirement would not be met with that brick being painted. Entirely, the applicant would need to leave at least 30% of that exposed brick in order to meet the requirement. Thus, the applicant is requesting design flexibility in order to not have to meet that 30% requirement. Um, the planning commission did vote to recommend at the January meeting, uh, unanimously, and the city council tabled the request at the, um, the applicant did bring forward an updated proposal which shows 20% of the building being unpainted brick on the north building face as opposed to their original proposal, uh, which was 0%. So, um, just to, to remind the council, the, this is an image of what the car wash looked like back when it was Coon Rapids Express Car Wash. And the updated 20% unpainted proposal by the applicant is shown here. So what the applicant is proposing is to leave the wainscoting of the building basically up to the windows as unpainted brick and paint the remainder of the building. Um, and, uh, let's see, I also have a, an elevation showing that as well. So essentially, um, staff's understanding is that council has probably three potential ways to, um, go about approving or denying their requested design flexibility. Um, the council could approve, vote to approve the original request for 0% exposed brick. Um, the council could vote to approve the request for flexibility for the updated request of 20% exposed brick, or the council could, uh, choose to vote to deny the request for flexibility, which would require the applicant to meet the 30% requirement. Uh, it's my understanding that the applicant would not take a denial of the flexibility, um, and choose to not paint the building at all, but that they would choose to paint as much of the building as they would be able to while still meeting that 30% requirement. So without knowing exactly what the proposed design would be, should the flexibility be denied, um, my understanding is probably that the exposed brick would be left, um, up higher, uh, than the, just the wainscoting, which is shown here. So probably up, um, partway up the windows. Um, the applicant still is committed to, um, trying to represent their, their brand identity as much as possible. And so would likely paint, um, the remainder of the building. There is no, um, ordinance in the city code that planning staff would be able to use to require the applicant to not paint any of the building at all. So some of the building would still be able to be painted, um, without any, um, any issue with, uh, with the, the city ordinance. Um, the applicant is here tonight and they may, um, wish to speak on the item, should it please the council. Um, but with that, staff are recommending, um, findings for approval and staff to, um, continue to recommend approval of the entire original requested flexibility, um, for 0% of the facade to remain unpainted, um, with the 20% also as an option. And that's all I have for presentation. Thank you.
I have looked at that building so many times and I so struggle with this because right now, I just, I love the way it looks right now with the black and the red brick. I mean, it's just like, it's like Americana. It's Route 66. And it's, it's like every other building code now. You know, you drive by the, the Jensen's in Champlin and it's the red brick and the black. It's just such a classic look. And it's like, there isn't any amount of paint that isn't going to just make it butt ugly. And I'm just, but he's got a right to paint up to, you know, 30% of it, or, or, I'm sorry, has to leave 30% exposed. So there's, it's, the building's going to get messed up anyway. So I don't know. However it happens, it happens. But I would like to address this at, at our retreat. I would like to change this. I'd like to up these standards so we can have some decent looking buildings there.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Griszkowiak.
Can we ask Mr. Patzner to, you glossed over one photo and that's the way it looks like right now with the black roof and the, and the brick. So, right here. Um, to me, this looks like it meets the intent of our River Rapids overlay district. This is what people before me said, we have a vision. We want the, 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 uh, Boulevard to be had, be at a higher level. We're getting there slowly. And, uh, I don't think we should detract from that original vision. I think this looks good. I like the way this fits with the overall, the district. So I would be opposed to granting, uh, this design flexibility.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Griszkowiak, um, Geisler, I get that G figured out here.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, you know, the River Rapids overlay district contains the flexibility, uh, tool within it, which is very useful for the city. Um, we've used it in other spots. Uh, for example, when it really is a difficult space to work with. The Caribou Cabin down the way needed some flexibility for a second sign because the county has a sign on their property and wouldn't, wouldn't share. Um, we had the same thing down, uh, by the Fresenius spaces where we had a requirement for clear glass along the bottom floor. That open glass to a street for a medical clinic really doesn't make a lot of sense. So allowing flexibility there made a lot of sense. The point of flexibility is to try to, i- is a tool that we can use, but we don't have to use it. And it is an option. It's not a variance. Uh, we're not going into that space, but it, this really, the point of having this standard here is to drive a certain aesthetic along certain very narrow corridors that are highly visible and represent the city as a whole. Um, and with that, that, this is one of those cases where, uh, the existing building met the standard. So there really isn't a whole lot of existing need to use flexibility, in my opinion. Um, we have definitely run into cases where flexibility was required and did make sense because there was no other way to do the job or develop the property without it. Um, we've had many, many cases for that. That's why it exists because we know we want to up the standards, but sometimes things come in with little weird properties. The cabin, the Caribou Cabin property is a perfect example of a little tiny lot that just had to be shoehorned in there in certain ways to make it work. And now we have a productive property. I, I don't feel that that meets us here. I, I agree with Councilmember Griszkowiak, um, that this is the intent. This is where we're going. I wish every building on the Boulevard looked as nice as it currently does, honestly. Um, so I, I'm inclined to deny the use of flexibility here.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Carlson.
It's pretty apparent I was in the minority when I expressed my thrill for a black and white building two weeks ago. And I, I understand that. I'll live with that. Um, I've had a chance to think about it though, and, um, although there is a plethora of colors down Coon Rapids Boulevard, including some painted block and painted brick, I, um, I understand though. I understand the reason for keeping a standard and I understand the 30%. And, um, and so just because I do believe it's important to have the consistency, um, I would also, um, not support, uh, flexibility in this case.
What year did we come in with the River Rapids overlay? I mean, anybody, that was from the 90s or 2000 or something?
Yes, Your Honor, it was the early 2000s, I think in the 2003, 2004 time.
Okay.
Because the, the buildings that are down there that have like the painted brick, those are our older builder, older buildings. The one that's opened is like Winchell Donuts that's now, you know, 20 businesses later. But, yeah.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Armstrong.
I'll just weigh in for my two cents. Um, I actually think the, the last photo we looked at where it's majority brick, I think that, I think that is a gorgeous looking building. Um, I, I get branding. I understand branding for the, the company that, that I work with. It's a big deal to us as well. Um, but I, I look at that, I look at that building there and number one, it looks great. Uh, between the signage and the, the logo on the building, you can definitely tell it's, it's the Club Car Wash. And again, for what it's worth, the, the, the people I know that use that on a regular basis, um, they, they appreciate the, the service and the, the et cetera that they, that they get out of it. And they've, they've commented that it's a step up from what was there before. So for what it's worth to the owner of the, the business, I, I think you got a, I think you got a good location there. I think you got people that, that like the business and I love the way this building looks versus the black and white. So that's my two cents.
Mr. Mayor, may I make a comment?
Sure, Mr. Patzner.
I do just want to be clear that by denying the flexibility, that doesn't necessarily mean that the building shown here will be the result.
Oh, no, we know that. Yeah.
Okay. The, I, I, and I, if it please the council, the applicant is, is available and may be able to speak to what they would do, were the, the design flexibility denied, what they would be proposing in terms of a paint job.
Sure.
Okay.
Sure.
Thank you. Um, Michael Leidig with Robert E. Lean Associates. We're the engineer for Club Car Wash. Um, yeah, just, I understand I'm kind of, I've, obviously I can count to the majority here. Um, I, I guess just two, two items. So we are requesting the design flexibility specifically for the two street facing portions. That's what the code requires is that 30% brick on the two street facing portions. Um, I understand there's some pushback, especially on the Coon Rapids Boulevard side of things. Um, our position is still that we would request the 0%. We'd also propose the 20%. Um, if it is denied, we would go up to that 30%. Um, Club Car Wash would still paint the other two sides of the building. Um, we would ask if, if the Coon Rapids Boulevard face is the predominant face and the predominant concern face. Um, the picture that's on the screen right now shows, excuse me, um, that other side street facing, I believe that's southeast.
Correct River Drive.
Yes. Um, that's very heavily screened. Uh, it'll fall obviously from the air from a drone. Um, from the ground, you can't see that face unless you are on property, leaving or entering the wash. Um, we would request if council is uncomfortable with the planning commission and staff's recommendation of the, for the whole thing, if the council would be comfortable with allowing the design on that one side so that we can have the three sides painted and then because that side is screened and not really visible from the street level, um, if there would be tolerance for that as another, trying to find a middle ground.
So if it's not visible, why do you care if it's painted?
Oh, it's, it's visible on site. It's not visible from the street. That would be sort of the, the argument that it's not necessarily impeding the Coon River, or excuse me, the Coon Rapids Boulevard in the same way where you have street traffic for that narrow corridor.
Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, Councilmember, um, Geisler.
Uh, just a, just a question for you since you're here. Um, I, you know, you guys added to the, the tunnel, the entrance tunnel side of that.
That's correct.
With red brick. Uh, why, why not choose white brick or black brick or any of the other materials closer to the color palette you were going? Why did you choose matching materials to the rest of the building to make it look cohesive?
Yeah, that's a great point. Um, because they didn't intend to, their intention was to paint the brick rather than if they, like, let's say they used like a black stained brick or something like that. Um, it would not match when it was done. It would look like an addition versus if they used the brick, um, for the addition and then painted the whole thing, it would look like a uniform design. Is, if that kind of jives.
Sure.
That was, that was the intention behind it. Um, possibly a little bit cart before the horse, but here we are.
Kind of like it does now. It looks uniform now.
Right.
Yeah.
I know.
Mr. Mayor. Councilmember Griszkowiak.
Have we already granted some flexibility on this in terms of the, uh, glass? Did, I thought the, Mr. Patzner?
Yeah, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Griszkowiak. To my knowledge, no flexibility was granted, um, on this property. What, you know, it's possible that the requi- there was, there may have been a request, actually now that I think about it, there may have been a request when Coon Rapids Express Car Wash was built to add more glass and thus reduce the amount of the building that was, um, that was one of the approved materials. Um, and I think before the addition was built, that may have been less than the 30%. Um, but I, I would have to look back in the files to see if that's the case. But you, you're correct. There might have been, um, a flexibility request back when this was originally built.
Anything with the, because you can't see through that glass, right? That's, so there's...
Correct.
There's cinder block walls behind the glass.
Yeah.
Yeah, there's no, it's just fake glass.
But usually, I, I thought our standards were that the glass had to be transparent or where this is opaque. You can't see through. So there must have been...
Councilmember Griszkowiak, that, that, uh, applies only to retail and office uses?
Oh, okay. Fair enough. Thank you.
Councilmember Geisler.
And also, uh, we've, we've done opaque glass in places where like it would view the back of racking like at the Dollar General.
Right.
There, there's, there's a couple of spots where we've done that exception because it, it wouldn't make sense to see the back of a rack.
I think that was his point though. He was wondering if we'd already offered them some flex, flexibility on that.
To be clear also on the cinder block front, that's not going to remain cinder blocks. Uh, I think, you know, that's, that'll be material to match the building. It's not going to remain cinder blocks.
I'm not sure what we're talking about. I was actually talking about the cinder block walls that were built behind the glass, the, behind the glass panels that are there.
Oh, I'm, I'm sorry. I'm not familiar with the existing car wash, but those, those, um, as is on a previous slide, there's two of those glass areas are going to be filled in with brick.
I'm not sure what we're talking about now. So, Mr. Patzner, what, do we?
Inside, insides of the windows?
Yes, essentially. I mean, uh, obviously they're blocked right now. The building's still under construction right now. The building is not complete. That photo is taken from a, it's not completed yet. So I, I, I apologize. I thought you were talking about cinder blocks in the windows right now. I was saying that that's a function of construction.
So right, so, so you're, what, I guess, so what's going on? You're, you're, you're going to block off two, two of the windows? What now?
So this elevation.
Yes.
This is where these... This is where these, let's see here, so you see how essentially this is all window across?
Right.
If you look at the proposed, excuse me, the proposed elevation, you can see that some of those windows are no longer there. Those will be replaced with brick.
Why did you ever put those in? Because there's, I mean, they were, all of the windows were gone from the side of that building, and they put in cement walls, and then they put the windows back in there again. And now you're going to block over them.
I'm not the architect, we're the civil engineering, so...
Okay. Well, I'd like somebody to make a motion to deny this, so we can just let them figure this out, because we're not going to be happy with it anyway.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Geisler?
In Plan Case 25-1, I move that we deny design flexibility for the painted brick facade for Club Car Wash with the four bulleted findings in our packet.
Second?
Motion by Geisler, second by Carlson to deny. Is there any discussion, further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, so actually, we should have actually made a motion that was here and then voted against it, or how, or how do you want to do this?
Are we okay?
Did we do it okay?
I think so, because we did, oh, did we table the last motion? Did we table a motion at our last?
Well, we pulled it off the table.
Pulled it off the table, and we had no motion.
Pardon?
And we had no motion.
We had no motion.
And now we've just brought a motion to deny based on the findings. I think we're good.
We're good, okay, all right, very good. All right. Item number 10, thank you. Item number 10 is to consider and receive the 2024 Community Development Annual Report. Mr. Brown?
Yes, good evening, and I will be brief since it is getting late. I do, though, like to take this opportunity once a year or so, just because while our department frequently has agenda items in front of you, like the last one, our staff of 20 or so people includes many people who do a lot of hard work behind the scenes, so just like to take the opportunity to recognize them. In 2024, we issued over 7,200 building permits for over $146 million in construction activity. So that included a wide range of projects, certainly dominated by some of our institutional users over the last year, including Mercy Hospital and Anoka Ramsey Community College. But in addition to that, a wide range of industrial, commercial, and residential projects. We issued permits for 27 new dwelling units total, so there weren't any new apartment buildings last year. So that included 19 townhouse units and eight single-family homes. On the housing front, our Front Door program continued to be popular. I will note that the application period for this year's Front Door program is open for another week or so, so if anyone is interested in applying for that, they can do so. But our other home improvement programs were very well subscribed as well, so that's just another highlight. And I'd like to call out, too, on the sustainability front, we were able to introduce some new programming, including receiving a grant for the Solar for Public Buildings program to improve energy efficiency and save our residents some money on electricity. So I'm happy to answer any questions, but appreciate the opportunity.
Nice work. It's always fun to look through that and see all the work you guys have done. Questions for Mr. Brown?
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Geisler?
Mr. Brown, where may the public find this report on your website?
Well, currently, it is attached to the agenda. Assuming it is accepted, we will put it in the document center with the other annual reports. We have that linked on the various community development pages.
Thank you.
So CoonRapidsMN.gov, and look for the community development. All right. So we need a motion to accept this, is that what we need here?
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Carlson?
Make a motion to accept the 2024 Community Development Annual Report.
Second.
Wow, that was fast.
Butler?
Okay, motion by Carlson, second by Butler. Is there further discussion on this? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And that's accepted. Item 11 is to consider Resolution Number 25-5/8, approving plans and specifications and ordering an advertisement for bids for the annual street maintenance program. Mr. Hanson?
Yes, Mr. Mayor and Council, this is our annual street reconstruction or street maintenance program. So the item in front of you is to approve the plan specifications or order the ad for bid. Coon Rapids, we have been the lead agency for a number of North Metro area cities. We're now up to 17 different cities. The contract itself is for street maintenance services that includes seal coating, pavement markings, crack sealing, and fog sealing. The cities that are participating in this year's program are listed in the council memo, weather permitting, and if the council approves the bids, ultimately, the work would be done between May and September of this year.
Very good. Any questions of Mr. Hanson?
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Geisler?
Mr. Hanson, you know, quite the consortium you've got going here, do we open that up for other people if they want to join in, like Anoka or anybody else? Is that an annual, like, hey, if you want to join, hop on, or how does that go about?
Yeah, so cities will often contact Coon Rapids staff to understand the parameters of the joint powers agreement and how the contracting for it works. And if it works for them, they'll, there needs to be an amendment to the joint powers agreement for the overall program. But if our council and their council approve that amendment, then they're allowed to join. And each city may not participate each year, and they still may not participate even after they review the bid prices that come back. But we've had a number of cities contact us throughout the course of the program since its inception in 2004, and now we're up to 17 different cities.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Carlson?
Mr. Hanson, did you say 17 different cities?
Correct.
Well, we must save a lot of money on that.
It is an economic, yes, it works better for the smaller city or the cities that have less quantities, I would say, and Coon Rapids and Andover, and some of the other bigger cities provide more of the quantity.
Thank you.
Somebody want to move this forward?
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Geisler?
I'll move that we adopt Resolution Number 25-5/8, approving plans and specifications and ordering advertisements for bids for the 2025 Street Maintenance Program.
Second.
Motion by Geisler and a second by Armstrong. Is there further discussion on this? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And that motion carries. Item 12 is to consider Resolution 25-3/8, accepting plans and specifications for miscellaneous trail reconstruction and authorized solicitation of bids. Mr. Hanson?
Yes, Mayor and Council, so this is our annual miscellaneous trail reconstruction project. We've been doing these for a number of years now. So the 2025 project includes a trail segment that is within Sunrise Pond Park, portions of the Riverview Trail between Exava Streets and Direct River Drive, including, we're going to straighten out that crosswalk that goes across Direct River Drive as part of this work. Portions of the trail system within Alflin Park behind Fire Station One primarily, a connection to Sand Creek Trail, portions of Rockslide Park Trails, and then some of the City Hall Trails that are directly behind City Hall and connect to the Coon Creek Regional Trail. That is the base bid of this particular project, and then we do have an alternate bid. The golf course has contacted us, they have a number of golf cart paths that they would like to combine with this project if it is economical and within their budget to do so. So we have included that work as an alternate to be reviewed and evaluated based on the actual contract bid prices. And then if everything is accepted and the project ultimately moves forward, the work would be programmed between June and August this year.
All right. Any questions of Mr. Hanson?
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Geisler?
Mr. Hanson, when we do an alternate bid, bidders can place a primary and the alternate together, but they're not required to deposit on both?
They are required to bid on everything.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Carlson?
Make a motion to adopt Resolution Number 25-3/8, approving plans and specifications and ordering the advertisements for bids for the 2025 Miscellaneous Trail Reconstruction and Improvement Project.
Second.
Motion by Carlson, and I'm going to give that one to Armstrong. Second. Is there further discussion on this?
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Gaskowjak?
You know, we've got this in the 2025 budget for both, so I think it makes sense to combine them and ask for that alternate bid. Hopefully, we get some really good pricing out of this.
Motion, a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And that motion carries. Item 13 is to consider Resolution 25-4/8, approving plans and specifications and ordering advertisements for bids for sanitary sewer lining. Mr. Hanson, this is what we've talked about a number of times already?
Aye, yes, so it's really continuing the program of the large diameter sewer lining, concrete, large diameter concrete pipes. We started doing it in 2017. This would be the fourth project that we have done on our large diameter sewers, and something that was talked about in our sewer comp plan that was developed in 2018 as a priority for the city to focus on. So this next program will really, or take off, this next project will take off on Hanson where we left off two years ago, and then bring us up to Mississippi Boulevard, then we're going to go west, and we're going to try to get to Riverview Creek. So within the budget and our construction or cost estimate and what we have budgeted, we think we can get close. So we have included that as a, the base bid, and then we have an alternate bid for another 300 feet. Either way, we're going to look to avoid any impacts to Mississippi Boulevard, excavating within Mississippi Boulevard. We think we can do that by using the 96-inch culvert of Riverview Ditch or Riverview Creek to thread our bypass pipe through there to avoid excavations there. As talked about in the council member memo, there are a few property owners that would be impacted that have direct connections into the sewer, so we're going to have to provide vouchers to them, basically cash, so that they can get a hotel for a night or two until we can reinstate their sewer service. There's 11 property owners that we'll be working with there. We've done this before, and we haven't experienced any issues with the property owners that have had to have vouchers in the past. So the project includes a base bid and then an alternate bid, and then if everything moves forward, the plan would be to complete the work really starting after 4th of July and then through the early fall months. So we don't want the work on Mississippi. There will be traffic control, and there will be the bypass pipes set up throughout the work, but we don't want the 4th of July parade and the associated traffic to be impacting any of this. So we're not going to start until after the 4th of July, and then we'll go through the summer and then early fall. It'll all be wrapped up.
Okay. Much appreciated. I'm still picturing that 4-inch sewer pipe going into that 36-inch. I didn't realize we had any direct feeds into those things.
Yep.
All right, any questions of Mr. Hanson?
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Carlson?
I just want to make a comment in how great it is that we have this sewer lining program, so much better than tearing stuff up and rebuilding it. My understanding, Mr. Hanson, is that this alone lasts just as long as a new pipe would just about, wouldn't it?
Absolutely. It's also a structural liner, so I mean, it doesn't need to be aligned again. It's going to be good to go for many, 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 many years.
It's a great program for cost and practicality, and also, it probably puts out our residents a lot less than if we would have been digging things out.
Yeah.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Armstrong?
I make a motion, Council, adopt Resolution Number 25-4/8, approving plans and specifications and ordering the advertisement for bids for the 2025 sanitary sewer lining project.
Second.
Motion by Armstrong and a second by Geisler. Is there further discussion on this? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And that motion carries. Item 14 is to consider Resolution 25-7/8, accepting plans and specifications for the Highway 10 water main relocation and order advertisement for bids. Mr. Hanson, anything you want to touch on this?
Yeah, I can just explain. The city has about 500 feet of 18-inch water main that's within the Mindat right-of-way. So this is kind of along where Crooked Lake Boulevard wraps around and turns into 124th. It would be the south westerly quadrant of Main Street and Highway 10. So Mindat is, they've actually got bids now for the Highway 10 expansion, so they will be conducting that work here this summer. As part of that project, there are noise walls, and one of the noise walls that's proposed with the project is going to be on Crooked Lake Boulevard extending all the way almost up to Main Street, and that's where the impact that we're talking about here is. So this water main exists within Mindat right-of-way by permit, and it was decided by Mindat that the work would not be done as part of their project work, and the city would have to undertake it separately. We develop plans and the cost estimates for it, and exceeds the amount that we would just be able to quote from a few different contractors and get bids that way. We have to go through the public bidding process, so that's what we're proposing to do right now. And then our plan would be to do the work in May and June of this year and try to be out of the way when Mindat comes through and starts the highway project this summer.
All right, any questions of Mr. Hanson on that?
And I would point out, we did anticipate that this would be work that we would have to be doing in 2025, so it is included in our city budget for this year. And it was anticipated as part of our costs for Highway 10.
All right. Councilmember Geisler?
Mr. Mayor, I move that we adopt Resolution 25-7/8, approving plans and specifications and ordering advertisements for the bids for the Highway 10 water main relocation project.
Second.
Motion by Geisler and a second by Butler. Is there further discussion on this? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And that motion carries. Item 15 is to consider purchase of streetlight materials for 25-1 street reconstruction.
I can do this one, too.
Get Mr. Hammer in here. Kidding.
I should be able to answer any questions. This is part of the street reconstruction project. So this is our process every year for how we upgrade the street light poles and the fixtures as part of street reconstruction. It's not included in the actual contract for the street work. So it's done with the city's electrical contractor. We get quotes from our lighting material vendor, Protec Lighting Solutions, and then we also compare, we compare those prices to make sure they're competitive, and then we work with our city's master electrical, electrician, Muska, to actually do the installation. So this is the work to secure the materials needed, and there are 63 different poles and fixtures that will be upgraded to LED, ultimately saving the city on maintenance and energy costs. And the cost for this work is $147,315.
All right. Any questions of Mr. Hanson?
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Butler?
Mr. Hanson, I was just curious, like, what's the timeline overall to getting citywide LED everywhere? I just need some historical context there.
Yes, our process, thank you for that question, Councilmember Butler, our process has really been, in the last five, six years, we have been more aggressively upgrading these streetlights to LED. And we've been doing it, our program is really to do it as part of the street reconstruction program. So some neighborhoods that we're working in may have Kinesis or Excel streetlights that are owned and maintained by those electrical providers, in which case, they've already upgraded most of their fixtures to LED, and then whether the poles get upgraded as part of the project, sometimes they do, sometimes they don't, it's kind of up to them. But it kind of depends on the neighborhood that we're in, and our program is really to do it as part of the street reconstruction projects.
Thank you.
All right. Any other questions for Mr. Hanson?
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Carlson?
Make a motion to authorize a proposal of $147,315 from Protec Lighting Solutions to purchase streetlight materials for the 2025 Street Reconstruction Project.
Second. Motion... Motion by Carlson and a second by Armstrong. Is there further discussion on this? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And that motion carries. Item 16, consider Resolution 25-34, amending the 2025 fee schedule to add stormwater fee for the sod farms. Anybody need anything else on this? Seems like we've kind of already done this one tonight. Now we're just adding it.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Grisgovia?
I'll make a motion to adopt Resolution 25-34, amending the adopted 2025 fee schedule to add stormwater fee for sod farms.
Second.
Motion by Grisgovia and a second by Carlson. Is there discussion on this? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And that motion carries. Open mic portion of the meeting. Please, and I'm so sorry, it's normally never this late, but please come up and give us your name and address, and then you've got three minutes to share anything with, with us regarding city business.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, my name is Derek Lind, and I actually live in Ramsay. I do have a handout, are you guys willing to accept a handout, or should I give it?
Sure.
Okay. I'll be brief, I know you guys had a long evening here, so, like you said, I'll be wrapped up in three minutes. The reason I'm here tonight is for election integrity. I'm with the ASIT group, and we're focusing on the pole pads, and the reason for that is the county is set to purchase new pole pads on the 25th. I believe you guys were involved in a meeting on the 29th of January where they stated some facts to you, and we just want to respond to some of those, some things from that meeting. If you could open up this, this first thing here. Page one, they said the pole pads are going to cost about $1,000, I'm sorry, $100,000. Our figures are coming in at up to $873,000, and we're getting those figures from them. So I think they kind of misrepresented how much these pole pads are going to cost. Let me back up for a second. We think these pole pads are a terrible idea. We do not think they should get them for three reasons: cost, security, and then we've got a legal thing here, and we're, I'm laying this out here in this sheet, so. That's a breakdown of the price comparison between electronic pole pads versus paper pole pads, that's on page one. If you go to page two, security, at the end of the day, these e-pole pads are iPads with cellular service that use third-party software. Somebody explain to me how that's more secure than a piece of paper at a local precinct. It's just not. So I'm appealing to your common sense, or you can look at that, that sheet there side by side, if you can go to the next page, please? I guess we'll call this political process. They, they came out with these pole pads in 2018, and they kind of quietly pushed them out through staff between the county and all the cities. This was a major change to our election system. There should have been a political process involved. You guys should have voted on this, up or down, whether or not you want these things, that's up to you. That way, the people can have a say, but that's not what happened. What happened is, it got pushed out by staff, you have a service agreement, these pole pads just showed up. One example we have there is in Dakota County, they have a JPA, and our question is, why do they have a JPA when you guys don't? Now, the county's saying they have the authority, well, why does the city of, it's Infra Grove Heights actually has the JPA? If you can go to the, if you keep flipping through to the very last page of what I gave you, I actually have a copy of the first page of the JPA from Infra Grove Heights. And then the story in between that is, we are comparing these e-pole pads to a Trojan horse. They advertise them as doing something or all these wonderful things, but what these things are really doing is giving these old e-pole pads access to our election data. So, I'm going to wrap it up there, I know you guys had a long night, thank you for giving me this, this three minutes. Are there any questions for me at this time?
Any questions?
I know, I know you weren't expecting me to show up here. We're making the rounds, I had to come tonight, that's why I had to sit here, so.
Well, sorry for keeping you so late, thanks for keeping it under three minutes, nice job.
Yeah, yeah, thank you, thank you for the time, and any questions, you can reach out to us, our information's on it.
Thank you. All right. Yes. Open mic. All right, give us your name and address.
Jim Hutchinson, 2908 109th, and I live like a driver on the block by that car wash, and I want to thank you gentlemen for standing up and saying I like the brick. I'd like to see everything on Coon Rapids Boulevard, brick. I, my daughter lived in Chicago, and it's, they've, they got rules that everything is built in brick after the fire. And I'll tell you what, it's a beautiful, I mean, it, it really would be nice if we had brick all the way up and down. That ugly little white brick building you talked about, no, that's a eyesore. But yeah, I mean, I agree, it's a nice-looking building the way it is, and that black, oh. I mean, I drive by that car wash up here from, by the Burger King, oh my God. Somebody throw some water on that thing, it's on fire. That's nasty.
So, so, Jim, is that why you came to talk to us?
No, no, I just came, I, I try to come to meetings every once in a while. It does, you know, I'm retired now, but a lot of things happen in between, and it, and it's interesting hearing some of these things that are going on, and this is the first time I heard about the car wash.
Okay. Because, because normally, an open mic, you actually, that's the one thing you can't talk about is things on the agenda that night. And it was the one thing you pulled out, but I figured we're going to give you a little lateral movement here, so.
That's fine, but I, I want to thank you guys, so I, I agree with you guys 100%.
Well, thank you.
I'm sure he was much better.
Thanks for hanging out for the evening. Normally, these don't go that long either, so. All right. Any, we'll close the open mic portion of the meeting, and we are up to other business, other business to have before council this evening. What, everybody just want to go home now, or what? Councilmember Armstrong?
I'd just make a suggestion to Mr. Hanson that you participate a little bit more in the meetings. I appreciate all the, I appreciate all the information tonight, and yeah, I always learn from you, so thank you.
And thank you, council members. Usually, the second meeting of February has traditionally been our public hearing evening, so I appreciate you all being able to be here tonight and to be able to support the projects.
All right, other business?
Motion to adjourn, second.
Motion by Carlson, second by Butler to adjourn, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
We're adjourned.